In a building?
In a box.
And you just want to consider that also, it was more than what was being grown either the right of way or on the property. After a while, they began giving away other stuff that was not, had not originated on that property.
I think this was an unusual situation that came up one time. And I'm not sure, it's kind of like spot zoning or something, where are we making a big deal out of a one-time thing? We certainly learned maybe what we should do different next time. I mean, sometimes trying to be the nice guy and let something go. I'm just not sure how much trouble we need to go rewriting things if we just have a little better idea of how to handle this. And I don't think this is likely to come up again.
But if it does, it would be nice to have it clear.
Yeah, it's not real clear.
Clear black and white. Nothing more than 12. If it goes over 12, which we either outback it or not.
You know, the other thing that is an issue that other communities have had to deal with, that is really as this is written right now, is would be prohibited, and that is on the property itself, the front lawn. Right now, currently, you're supposed to keep your front lawn as a front lawn and maintain an improvement, as I read the zoning ordinance and the nuisance ordinance. But as you know, we begin to see more and more different types of front lawns where, you know, people don't mow their lawns anymore and put various grasses, tall grasses in there. So that might be something that you would want to address at the same time and make clear that if it was your desire, that that would be permitted.
So right now, there's limitations on how tall grass or shrubs or whatever can be in your yard?
Well, if you look at, yeah, if you look at 2347, you have to keep it free of nuisances in the following areas. One is on areas of developed lots, parcels and units where a traditional lawn has been established. So you couldn't have weeds, grasses or undergrowth within that area either, as the way this is currently written. Or if you read two, the front 25 feet measured from the improved right-of-way of residentially zoned lots, whether or not vacant or lots or parcels with residential uses in which more than 85% of the lot has been developed. So there are some restrictions now on front yards. I'm sure there are exceptions to that.
Well, it's like you said, the trend is to go to things that you don't have to mow, and decorative grasses certainly get bigger than 12 inches.
But you can have a three-foot fence at your front yard, but you can't have an 18-inch bush in your front yard.
Three-foot fence, I think it'd be set back for certain.
It can be out, I think, at the sidewalk, six foot on the side. You gotta be back, it's three foot the first.
Three feet.
But, yeah, you can have a three-foot fence, pick a fence out by your front yard, but you can't have a 14-inch shrub.
I have a hard time telling people what they can do in their own front yard, but...
It makes sense on the corners.
Yeah.
Because that's...
A right-of-way view.
Yeah, especially with all the kids running around on bicycles and that kind of stuff, you don't want...
Three-foot fence goes right into the corners.
But it's on, it's not...
It's on the inside of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
But I mean, Dick is explaining to us the whole front yard is really limited to 12 inches, so. Government is not your friend.
I think we should do some, do something about tightening up the public right-of-way, but I have a real hard time telling people what they can do in their front yard. I think there's a lot of accountability with your neighbors. If it looks terrible, they're gonna tell you it looks terrible, especially in a town like this, where they have taken a lot of pride in what they're doing. But, I don't know, I think the right-of-way things should be tightened up, especially if we're gonna be tearing up streets and sidewalks and underground and everything else. You open yourself up to a whole different thing when people say, "Well, you came back and put dirt in grass." But I had expensive grass and expensive trees and all this other stuff.
I think we need to... In the right-of-way, we're covered.
Yeah.
Is it, is it, the consensus is, to say all plantings, no higher than 12?
In the right-of-way.
Because you can call, you know, you can call something, whatever you want to call it, you know what I mean? It says it undergrowth.
Any plantings.
Yeah. Cliffs watermelons aren't gonna grow over 12 feet, but they shouldn't give them the right-of-way.
And then what about the front yard? Should we change at the same time and eliminate the restriction?
I don't know how much it's come up to be an issue that needs to be changed.
Well, the...
And it's been based anyways.
As was said earlier, there's probably 30 examples that could come to anybody's mind that are technically in violation of what we got on the books. Is this the time to change that, or are we just gonna leave alone? I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna tighten up the right-of-way, why don't we deal with the lawn thing too? I mean...
I got a hitching post that's been here for over 100 years. I ain't have to move it, but if it is, it is.
But it's not shrubbing, you know what I'm saying?
It doesn't...
It doesn't roll.
Yeah.
Just leave it the way it is.
Yep.
Okay. We can make, Mike, we can bring back ordinance on that. Okay, the second half of this then is the larger question of community gardens, which can be defined in various ways. It usually though involves a group of people planting a garden within an area and then sharing the produce of products. As was pointed out, I think in one of the meetings, we do actually have a community garden in, which park?
Creekside.
Creekside Park. They are not, as written in the zoning ordinance, they are not currently permitted in residential districts. So if you are inclined to allow community gardens in residential districts, we have to make some changes to the zoning ordinance to permit that. And once you do that, then you need to think about what kind of defending restrictions would you put on that that might be related to traffic, that might be related to signage, which is currently prohibited really in a residential zoning district, which might be related to whether you're going to share only what's produced, if you're gonna share only with the participants that are participating in the garden, which is the conventional stance, and whether or not you're gonna allow other product to be brought in. So you're running a miniature farmer's market or something as opposed to a community garden.
Well, we already have a community garden, and we already have a farmer's market. There's been discussion about another community garden with the whatever fairground committee part thing. So I don't, it's already outlawed in residential. I just think if you allow it, then you have to set 100 other standards as to where people can park, what they can grow and what... If you have a big enough garden, you're giving stuff to your neighbors already, or they're coming over and taking, you know what I mean? And nobody ever knows about it. It's a non-issue.
Question, Dick, the community garden, isn't that public facilities at Creekside? So wouldn't it be considered...
Yes, and that is a permitted use in that zone.
That puts the community in community garden. It's not in Cliff's Yard. It's in community space.
Plus, the park is parking in the park, you're not parking on the street, and you're not, a lot of people walk to that park. It's right in, that'll interest housing. And if you wanted the fairgrounds staff with it, there's plenty of parking there, plenty of people walk to the fairgrounds. I don't, I just think if you allow it in residential areas, then you have to set 150 other precedents, and then it just looks like we're overly controlling.
Mr. Mayor may add something. Another thing you want to consider too, is if you have a, you have a residential subdivision where in this situation, the surrounding neighbors complain because of the traffic and there are whole host of issues, but we won't go there, but the issue you have too is, it's almost like the old day open burning bans, where you need to get permission from all your neighbors around you to do it. Because once you have one object, now we're, we as government are the bad people, because now we gotta step in and address it.
Plus, we're spending time on enforcement. Plus, you're spending time figuring out if it's actually a nuisance, or if they just had a loud party and made their neighbor mad, now they're complaining to get back at them. It's just such a, a can of worms, in my opinion, for something that we already provide. And it's not, I mean, it's, Paula does the best she can, but it's not well-visited or well-advertised, and it's decently maintained, but is that because nobody knows about it? Or because there really isn't a push for it as much as a couple of people made it seem like there was? Because I haven't heard the words "community garden" since October, maybe because it was winter, I don't know, but is it just because the small subsections that were for it were louder than the rest of the people? Or if there was a developed need and desire for it, wouldn't that community garden at Creekside just be pumping out vegetables at a... I think that's a lack of knowledge. Until I lived here my entire life, and I had no idea we had a garden. I didn't know it was there until I was on Parks. And I visited it after, so I think that's just, nobody knew. Maybe the Parks Board, and they're doing their, they're planning their brochure and all that stuff. Maybe they advertise it, and then down the road, if there's a need to revisit the residential aspect, we can revisit it, but I don't see the need to change anything right now. It might just be me, but we don't get a ton of requests. No, I don't think we need a community garden in a residential area. Your neighbors are picking under your garden laws, one thing, but just keep that residential area standing by.
Which we already know. So status quo is okay.
Anything else on community gardens? Everyone's favorite topic ever? Okay. Mike, anything else?
All right, let's go to new business. Item A is 1519, the grant application for Amity.
City administration has been working with Williams and Works, submitting a Michigan Department of Transportation category B grant for Amity Street. Originally, we sought grant funding for road improvements to Amity, Chatham, Lincoln Lake, and Elm Street in conjunction with a water, with a proposed water and sewer main project, also known, if you saw in our last meeting, it would have been as Saw Project Number Six. After reviewing the project further, we found that the conditions on Elm and Chatham were not as bad as Amity. In addition, the water and sewer funds could cover the cost of the road work on these streets when the time comes for those water and sewer repairs. If we move forward, the grant would cover Amity Street from Main Street to Suffolk. The road construction cost would be, 500,000 would be eligible for 250,000 in grants. The city would be responsible for, obviously, the remaining 250, in addition to any utility work and engineering. The project would consist of removing the existing asphalt and replacing it with three to three and a half inches of new asphalt. Sidewalk ramps would also be brought up to the ADA standard. We also, we would also incorporate stub outs for anticipated future water main extensions along Chatham and Elm at this time. Additionally, sanitary steward manual repair at Main Street identified in the Saw Grant work would be done. Again, that work would not be included in the, in the MDOT grant, but it would be, it would be an attachment to it that we were considering doing it. There is an economic development component to these grants, and we would incorporate how this would benefit Lighthouse and the new, and the low light and power facility. In addition, the street is the primary service to Lowell Middle School, Bushnell Elementary, Cherry Creek, and the new Lowell Area Schools development at the Saint, at the Saint, at Saint Mary's Church. There's also the secondary north and south route for residents traveling along the west side of the city. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approved Resolution 15-9 to submit a grant, 15-19, to submit a grant request for the Michigan Department of Transportation category B program. This project, if it was granted, would have to be done in the state's fiscal year 2020, meaning it would have to be done between October of 19, and would have to be completed in, by fall of 2020. I would anticipate the construction being done in the next fiscal year. If we did receive the grant, then we would have to probably, at a certain point, we have to amend the budget to allow for engineering costs. At this time, if, if we were to move forward with this grant, I do believe we have the funds available, especially once we have our Saw Grant in place, then we can co-mingle the Public Act 51 funds. Either way, if we can't until a later date to do that, I still believe there's funds available to do this. However, if we do not receive this grant at this time, Amity can't be done. And just also a reminder, it doesn't go all the way down in Amity. There is one street this will not get. It'll get up to Suffolk, I believe, between Suffolk and Foreman at this time is not being considered in the project because of costs. But if we, right now, we have, we have two projects we've submitted grants on to try and get considered. This project and Monroe. If we can secure funding for those, at least it gets two major streets in, in the city being addressed, one on each side of the river, which I think is important.
I think the MDOT's help, protecting in our budget, you know, it would be great to get a road, another road done, but... Well, I read today and first looked at, MDOT will do whatever Mike tells them to do.
Yes, I read that too.
Other than the 250 that, that we have to come up, and plus engineering, what do you think that total budget is that we'd have to look at with the engineering and everything else?
Engineering's usually 20% of your costs. So 20%, total project cost, between design, construction, and...
100,000.
Yeah.
And the utility work that we have to do?
That would have to be, that'd be down to water and sewer. I don't have those dollar amounts in front of me, but that would be what, that would mostly be water and sewer funds.
As biased as I am to the Lowell and Chatham intersection, I think Amity's a lot bigger deal, especially once the preschool and the kindergarten get open, and it's gonna be a heavily traveled road, and...
We felt that, we felt that, we felt that after Dave Austin and I went out and looked at it, we felt that it would be a better use of tax dollars and grant, grant dollars to just do Amity rather than... We thought, we thought it'd be a good project in itself by tying it with the water and sewer, and the fact that, that is, that is adjacent to, you know, some commercial property. But we felt that after further, after we looked at it again, Amity was in just much worse condition, and if there was a way we could try and address that, we wanted to.
Mike, yeah, how, how quickly do you hear back when you apply for something like this?
Dave could probably answer that better than I could.
Just quickly, really go over it.
Well, okay. Time frame.
Yeah, this is a relatively new program, so we don't have any history with it, but I'm expecting it'll be a couple of months before that makes the decision. They are encouraging folks, if they have any shovel-ready projects, to do them yet this year, so they're gonna try and turn that around pretty quick. We don't have that situation, but I think that we'll get a pretty good... This was a relatively open call for projects here. We've, we just got a few weeks ago.
Let's cover some of the spot repairs too, right on that.
Well, what, what we're proposing, obviously, we want to get in the habit of doing any underground work that's involved in the streets, so the Saw Grant identified a couple of spot repair areas that, that would be done at the same time. Utility work would have to be covered under your utility rates, but the grant application actually looks favorably if you're doing some utility work at the same time.
And here, since we found the conditions at Elm and Chatham Street were not as bad as Amity, are you talking about street?
Correct.
Okay.
And that, that's between Amity and Lincoln Lake. Really, I had to take photographs to support the grant application on Elm and Chatham, but it's just not in that bad a shape, right? It's all relative, right, involved? And plus the fact that, that this gets us all the way from Main Street to the back of the middle school, which will probably make more sense to the, to the public that's using.
It's used from light power, and then Lighthouse is gonna be live here in a little while, and the urban ones is over there, and I think it just makes more sense to do this, but I agree.
Certainly puts a little pinch on our budget to do this, but anytime we can get matching funds from the state, this is $250,000 in free money to fix our roads, so it's no brainer.
And we're gonna study how much traffic she comes down those streets a day, she?
It's been a long time, but I can give you a rough estimate, it's probably 1,800 cars a day during the school year. It's busy.
Yeah. And it's, it's a way to move forward, just doing what we can do with the budget we have. It's great, even on days when it's nice and a lot of kids are walking over there, it gets back to, and if they put that new Saint Mary's School in there, they can't use the church. It's gonna be a bit easier. Yeah. Yeah. All right, I will look into that motion for Resolution 1519 for the grant submission.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support it, Jim.
Any other questions? Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
And Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
All right, item B 1901, 2560 bose road rezoning.
Yes, with the sale of 2560 bose to Lowell Township, as in addition to their new park, we need to have the property rezoned. Currently, the zoning is industrial, but needs to be rezoned to public facilities. At the most recent city planning commission meeting, the board recommended the city council this action. The rezoning has followed the requirements of the Michigan Zoning and Enabling Act. There's a memo in your packet for me to explain this in greater detail. Rezoning must be done via an ordinance approval, and in front of you is a copy of ordinance 19-01. If this is approved, the ordinance will become effective 10 days after publication in a newspaper record, as we rule a ledger. And I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approved ordinance 19-01 is presented to modify the zoning classification for 2560 bose from industrial to public facilities. Just so you're aware, we did convey that property to the township a week ago Friday.
Planning commission approves. Council ordinance?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, and it's gonna be a park and then versions broadband.
Correct.
Data storage.
Correct.
Uh, motion for ordinance 1901.
I make that motion. It's to approve.
I'll support.
Any other questions? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
All right, uh, item C, fire commission agreement revision.
Kent County has informed the city that their fire, that the Kent County Fire Commission Board has chosen to update the current member contract and assessment formula in 2016 as they believe it was outdated. The revised contract has clarity to the membership, addresses membership and membership benefits, terms of membership, termination of membership, new membership, fire commission board governance and administration, fire apparatus acquisition and sale of apparatus, budget assessment and finances, among other terms. The fire commission contributes, contribution to the firefighting supplies is eliminated. I reviewed the contract, and none of the modifications that they, that they sent to us caused any concern for me. This required, this required a majority vote of Kent County Fire Board, Fire Commission Board, Kent County Board of Commissioners and three-quarters of the membership communities. I'm recommending that the Lowell City Council approve the member contract revision for Kent County Fire Commission Agreement as presented. Just simply put, we buy certain equipment from them, breathing apparatus. I believe we get the county truck for them, is that correct?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yeah.
And there was nothing that, when I read the, when I read the agreement, that caused any alarm for me.
We benefit to one of our fire authority board members, Carl Blau, is on the commission, so we benefit from having kind of an insight of it when it comes to this kind of stuff. And I know they've been working on it for a while. The elimination of supplies isn't a huge hit. Most people are doing it on their own anyway, because you can get a better deal if you use Lincoln Airway Oxygen or something like that. So that elimination is minimal. And I haven't heard any other concerns or issues with it. It's been a long time coming that it needed to be revised. There was terms of municipalities in the original agreement that don't even exist anymore, so. It was a long time coming, but they'll keep everything cleaned up for hopefully a few years to come.
Is this something they should be looking at every couple of years?
Uh, depending on like jurisdictional changes or funding source changes, or if a municipality joins into an authority, unless there's a ton of that, you really don't need to. A lot of the standards and stuff come through the state anyway, because they have some say in protocol changes and stuff like that, but five to 10 years probably doesn't matter. Same thing, Mike's going through the policies and just making sure they're open and they're tied up.
Mike, one thing I did notice in this is that there, there's not a lot in the big cities, so is this more of a small township set up for this, this organization to help support them better than...
Yeah, well, uh...
Big guys?
With ones maybe without so much union involvement, is that a way to say it? Yeah. Yeah. And a lot of the, the larger departments have separate funding sources, and they don't go to the county for trucks, and they don't go to the county for mutual aid agreements and stuff like that, so. And they don't use, like, Grand Rapids doesn't use county dispatch, they have their own, so they don't need to go for that funding source. So they tend to not, it's not a necessity for them as much as it is for us. I'll recommend that the Lowell City Council approve the member contract revision for the Kent County Fire Commission Agreement as presented.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, uh, that's it. Board and commission reports, Mr. Canfield.
Uh, nothing till next meeting.
Mr. Chambers?
I have nothing.
Mr. Salzweedle?
Um, the Arbor Board meets on the 8th in March.
Well, since nobody else has anything, I got lots. I had a great week last week. I spent a couple hours with Steve at LLP. It was an official visit, but it was. I learned a lot of stuff. One of the things that I wanna, I think bears repeating is that our rates as low light and power customers are consistently a third below consumers' energy. And Steve monitors that on a month-to-month basis. He popped the stuff up on his computer and showed me that he plugs the numbers in, because the electricity varies all the time. So that was kind of cool. And the other thing that was of great interest to me, I like renewable energy, and I found out that Lowell Light and Power has a voluntary green pricing, cost me a penny a kilowatt, and I signed up the next day. So that was cool. I went to my first historic district board meeting, and I met the new owners of the beer store, Joel, Diana and Ed, and I'm not gonna steal their thunder, but they have a lot of plans. They're hoping to close in the next couple of weeks. The only thing I will say is that they want to do some big improvements on the way it looks front and back. And I might be doing some grant writing for them, because they need some help with that, so. And the big news of the evening, I do have a slide or two. Are we prepared?
We are.
This kind of coincides with the excellent work of Lowell's First Look, where they broke the news that our mayor has seen the light. And so here's what I'm proposing, the Mike DeBoer Roundabout Training Center, once the fairgrounds are gone. And in the past two weeks, I've worked diligently to secure funding from the Waggy Foundation... And in the past two weeks, I've worked diligently to secure funding from the Waggy Foundation, Lighthouse, King Milling, and the fine folks at Shemera Design, so this won't cost the city a penny. And to take it one step further. Next slide, please. Because of Mike's love of horses, the center of the training will feature a statue, this isn't exactly what it's gonna look like, but it's as close as it could get. And that's gonna be taken care of by Lowell Arts. They will design this, I'm seeing the statue maybe 18 or 27 feet.
All right.
That's all I got.
You done?
Wow.
I hope you guess who's getting skipped next time.
You pay next.
City managers report good luck top of that. For the record, that roundabout thing's never gonna happen. You call it a memorial roundabout, it gives me chest pains.
Um, Mayor, City Council, wanted to inform the council, last week we did a brush pickup. To my understanding, we've not done that in the past, I could be wrong, but it was very popular, and I know it was very well received, and I cleared a lot of, a lot of branches and brush out of my house, and I was real happy they came and got it. But we, we're looking at a new service delivery that we were gonna consider, and I've been working with Tuck Norman, city manager in Portland, on this, and, and nobody knows about this, but beginning next week, city staff, during their normal course of duties, they're gonna become a meal delivery service for local restaurants in town here. So if restaurants, if people in the city want to have, order food from the restaurant, whether it's our public works guys, whether it's the police chief, whether it's me, whether it's Sue Owen, during our work hours, we're gonna, we're gonna take time out of our day and deliver their, their food for them in the city limits. And so Portland's doing this as well, they're, they're implementing this as well, and one of the things we're even talking about, Tuck and I are talking about, is being able to find a step away where our residents could possibly go to like Olivera's in Portland and get stuff from them, and their residents could come or could get stuff delivered to them from Main Street Barbecue or Flat River Grill, something of that nature. So I'm very excited. I don't know how we're gonna pay for this, but I'm pretty big with budgeting, so I figured I'll make it work.
Maybe some, grow a hunch here?
Maybe, yeah.
Will the, will there be sirens?
I was just, uh, little battery for deliveries?
No, don't.
Sure, you can, because I'm gonna retire tomorrow. It should be noted that the city of Portland put this on their Facebook page, and the media actually called him nasty with that. Just a reminder, the next council meeting will be moved from Monday, April 15th to Tuesday, April 16th at 7:00 PM. And then the next day will be the, the Rec Park Design Day. We'll have a session between 2:00 to 4:00, and then 5:00 to 7:00 that evening. We had our booth at Expo, I thought, I got a lot of positive feedback. We gave away a lot of the, the flyers that people are gonna mail back. I don't know how many of them have come back to Williams and Works yet, but I know a lot of people were very impressed with how we were thinking of getting input for the, for that site, so looking forward to that day. I've been spending pretty much all of my time, usually this time of year, I only dedicate myself to one thing, and that's the budget. We, I've been, I've been working on that pretty much for the last week and a half, pretty much, that's pretty much what I've been dedicating my time on. Our general fund will see an increase, we're projecting before any modifications from the board review of about a $60,000 increase. And one of the things you're gonna see in this budget is, I haven't totally finalized it yet, but we are going to, the DDA is seeing a significant increase in revenue, and the DDA is eligible to pick up some, some additional bond financing for the, for the general fund for this building. So you will see money that normally is dedicated in the general fund for that bond payment, somewhere in the range of $100,000 to $150,000, being, being freed up by the DDA, by the DDA taking that on. You will see that in the budget. I haven't finalized what that number's gonna be just yet, but I'm working on that as, as we speak. What that allows us to do is it will allow us to put a little bit more money into local streets. It also, my intent is to also start pre-funding some retiree healthcare that's gonna be coming up here in the next few years. In addition, we are gonna try and make some increased payments to MERS to, to start addressing our unfunded liability. We've been, this year, we started to actually address it, and I, I anticipate with the modification that MERS we're gonna make, I, I've already put some ideas together on how I think we can correct this going forward, and that's something that we'll talk about, I'm hoping, in the summer, because I, I'm gonna be budgeting, we do have contracts open, and I would like to begin contract negotiations fairly, fairly soon into the next fiscal year, so we will, we will talk about that at budget time. Also, a reminder that the budget hearing, the budget work session, will be on Saturday, April 27th at 10:00 AM at Light and Power. Last week, I participated in a work group of communities that are considering recreational marijuana in their community. LARA has been putting these work groups on across the state, trying to get input from the marijuana industry along with the municipalities, and how they should designate their regulations once they, once they put their, their rules into effect sometime later this year. Couple things to note were, what I, what I learned was that, one of the things is, is that we talked, if you recall in our committee of the whole, when we talked about, we talked about possibly some sort of a lottery-based system to allowing different businesses to participate in. A number of communities that have done that for the medical marijuana, I said, it sounds like the, the businesses that they don't approve are now preparing litigation against those communities. So that's something I think we really need to think about as we develop our policy on One of the other, the other biggest issues, obviously, the big concerns that communities had were security issues, smell, odor control, those are all issues. Some of those can be addressed by LARA, a lot of them are gonna have to be addressed through your local ordinances. One of the big concerns that the communities had in, in discuss, in, in our conversation with LARA was to, was to ensure that when we have times where we have entities that aren't complying with what they need to do, that LARA will put some teeth into regulations to restrict them and to get them on a path of compliance. It sounds like LARA at this time is pretty supportive of that endeavor, but obviously, we, we haven't seen any draft language. We may see some draft language in the early fall before they actually put their rules and regulations out. They said they might even let some of the, the communities that participated in this see it, but well, that remains to be seen. One other, one other thing that came of note at that meeting was, you're seeing a lot of issues popping up with the social clubs, where you have these private clubs where people are smoking marijuana, kinda like a bar, but there, there's a whole, there's a whole number of issues, because you have the liquor control issues, then you have these issues where you don't have the liquor control issues, but you have some other liability issues because you have people who are there, and then they're driving, and there might be liability issues with that. The other, the other thing that is popping up that I know one community is, is concerned about is they, they have golf courses, and now some of these golf courses want to allow open-air marijuana consumption on their golf course. A lot of these issues, it doesn't look like LARA's gonna touch, they're kinda taking a position that they don't wanna usurp local authority in these matters, but this is a becoming an issue that's becoming more, with the, with the, with the changes in the law that's becoming more prevalent, that there's more things we may need to think about when we, when we move forward. I anticipate after, after sitting in this meeting, that once these rules come into effect, I'm pretty much convinced that the police chief and I, 95% of our time is gonna be dealing with this sole issue. I think there's gonna be a lot of different things that have to be, just we have to make sure that are being done, so we, we're making sure these legitimate businesses are in operation, but we also are gonna have a number, we're gonna have a number of issues that come up through this whole thing that I anticipate we're gonna, we're gonna be dealing with. So we'll, there's more to come with that. The, wanted to let you know that we did receive our renewals for our healthcare for Priority Health for our employees. The, the positive news is we're only looking at a 1.2% increase to our premiums, which in today's day and age, that's very good, and I was very, I was very pleased to, to see that, so we're not gonna have to go back and try and make any modifications this year to our healthcare because of that. And I know at our last committee of the whole meeting, we talked about possibly some ballot language for the city income tax. I have had a discussion with the city attorney about that. We do have it till August 13th, get that placed on the agenda, on the November ballot. The city attorney and I now, once I'm done with budget, now that he's back, we will, we will work on that and bring something back to you, I'm assuming sometime in the spring. And that's all I have.
All right. No applications for appointments, so we'll go to council comments, Greg.
Nothing.
All right.
Uh, I just got back from Colorado, I went out to watch Lowell Light and Power's lineman compete against power utility companies from all over the United States. Next council meeting, I'm hoping to have a short little clip of what they do when they're there and the, what, how they perform. It was a lot of fun, it was a good learning experience. Unfortunately, we were in Colorado Springs, we had 32 degrees, 15 mile an hour winds, and snow, so it was not the nicest time to be out there, but we supported our guys. More importantly, what we found when we were there, when we were talking to some of the utility companies from out of state, Florida, down in that area where Light Power's gone before, big utility companies. Our guys get nothing but high praise from them, and these big companies know where our little town is, and it's a pretty good feeling when you're out there, so.
Very cool. Cliff doesn't get a term, Jim?
Uh, the Expo was, was very busy, and it was a lot of fun, and I gave away all of the 2018 shirts and everything else, and now we'll have to go out and find some new giveaways for next year, so, great time.
Cool. Did you want a turn? Now, now I feel bad. I had a great time at Expo. I got followed around by a little police car, which was super cool, and I thought, just considering it was the first nice day of the year, that the turnout was pretty good. So, uh, that's all I got. Jim?
Uh, that'll be it.
Motion for a closed session.
Yeah, make a motion, we're going to a closed session.
House floor? Sue?
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
All righty.